Good evening and welcome to the Violin Board of Education Combined Meeting, 5:00 PM, July 13th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Ms. Fabry?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera's absent. Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time, place, agenda, etc., the Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuestra Comunidad, Visto Bueno, and the Clerk for the City of Violin, and the Administration Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, we will now stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do not. Thank you for asking.
Any special presentations tonight?
There are no special presentations.
Do I have any questions or comments on the HIB report? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
For approval of the HIB. We've not two minutes yet. So moved. Roll call, please.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Roll call, Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any questions or comments on the minutes from the May 4th, May 10th meeting? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
I'm staying.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
And Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to committee reports this evening, do I have any committee reports? Mr. Fiocchi?
Good evening. I have two. I will be doing Finance and Facilities. On June 27th at 8:00 AM via Google Meet, Finance Committee met. In attendance was myself, Mr. Yano, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Silva, Dr. Sneeden, Ms. Painter, Ms. Ziegler, Mr. Frye, and Mr. Mostaral. The topics we discussed, and if any board member would like more detail, just reach out to myself or Scott. SDA funding, meeting with the city, the mayor, and the business administrator, upcoming purchases, bids, shared services, transportation co-op transferred to Millville, insurance, early childhood program, transportation survey, vehicles, construction trades update, and transportation summary. Next, facilities met on June 30th at 4:30 PM via Zoom. In attendance was myself, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Mostaral, and Mr. Ferronaccio. Topics discussed: update on SDA grant and the money allocated for projects, high school power line transfer, centralizing electronics sign at the high school in front of VHS South, update on district-wide projects, HVAC, windows, greenhouse, track, roofing, staffing for facilities maintenance, and the veterans memorial field usage. That's it.
Mr. Holmes?
Good evening. Policy and Personnel Committee met on July 6th at 4:15 PM in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Present were Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Yano, Dr. Sneeden, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. Frye, Mr. Sabrana, and myself. Personnel discussion, Wallace and Pillah, Assistant Principal Recommendations, the Memorial Principal Search, Memorial AP, and Winslow AP searches. The BA vacancy has been reposted and guidance transfers. Policies discussed by Law 142, Board Member qualification prohibited acts, and Code of Ethics. We will add a statement about Board of Ed member school visits and propose at the next Policy and Personnel meeting.
Thank you. And the other, Ms. Acosta?
On June 13th, 2022, the Curriculum Instruction Technology Committee met. Present were Assistant Superintendent Mr. Frye, Superintendent Mr. Yano, myself, Ms. Cottis Patti, Alex Silva, and Megan Spinelli. Discussed were a new program, Read 3100, Critical Skill and Reading of Academic Text. We also discussed maintaining AMSA in the 5th grade through the MTSS procedure. We discussed the AMSA framework and developing that framework in each of the elementary schools for grades 4 and 5. We discussed the middle school humanities degree path at Johnstone. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask. And finally, we discussed the math program adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. Ms. Cottis Patti?
I do have a question about Policy and Personnel. I was going to wait until after, when we were talking about some of the hires and things like that, but I had, I know the answer to this, but I know some public have asked me some questions, and I don't want to give an answer that I really, truly don't feel comfortable giving. So I just have, it's a couple questions. When we're interviewing for like a principal position or vice principal, who would sit in on that interview process?
If we have a vice principal interview series, we would have the principal of that building along with central administration participate in principal positions. We have a committee that includes central administration along with a committee of principals who assist with that process.
Okay. And then, like, one more question. It's, we're being consistent. Like, the principals, if we're hiring for a certain school, those principals are actually sitting in on some of those. This, again, I know the answer to this, but I just would like it to come out from the administration.
As we hire the positions, assistant principal, but the principal is definitely a part of that process, the entire process.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other committee reports this evening? Any comments by our board solicitor?
None.
Thank you. Moving on, public comment on agenda items or any other manner. Please limit yourself to three minutes. Do we have any yellow sheets, Scott?
We do. Louise Vasquez?
Good evening. The only comment, it's really just a comment right now. In preparing to come to the meeting tonight, did see the information on the website for the meeting, the meeting time, but I did not see the agenda. And some of the public were inquiring as to where the agenda was. And I know that those things are still being worked on till the very last minute, but there should be some type of a general out there a little earlier to allow us as parents or the public to review the items and giving us enough time to prepare. If more of us need to be here on a particular issue, we just need a little more time for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Lewis?
Good evening, everybody. Stephen Lewis. My question's on school safety. Have all schools been inspected by professional people? That's one of my main questions.
We're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Can you speak a little bit more into the mic? It's very sensitive.
Okay. Have all schools been inspected by professional companies for safety procedures? And the next question would be, if they were inspected by people, companies, have any changes been made with their recommendations for safety for our schools? All schools are built different, so each school should be inspected safely or separately to make sure that the safety is correct for that school. Now that all schools are closed for the summer, are there plans for any safety drills with the police, fire department, EMS, city police at each school to make sure that everybody knows the layout of the schools, what procedures they should go through at each school, and what should take place if something should happen? Have members of the school board been to every school in the city during school hours to see how all these safety features are being utilized? If not, I think it would be a good idea for everybody to go at least once at all the schools, because like I said, all schools are different. And I'm sure there can be improvements. Metal detectors aren't the only, metal detectors aren't the only thing that we should be looking at as far as safety entrances and the like. I also think it's important to get the students involved. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm sorry. I think we should get all the students involved. The students know more about the school than anybody else, right? So maybe this school can form some kind of committee to come to the school board or whoever and give their ideas, and then we should listen to them and take action. I'm sure there's things that can be improved, and we don't want to see something happen and then say, what should we have done? So if we do everything ahead of time, it would be a way to maybe stop what could happen. And, because I know the Violin High School is bigger, and they have students that go from one building to another. How are they protected when they go from one building to another? That could be a major sticking point for somebody to commit a crime. So these are things that maybe students can tell you, and you can listen to them. Okay? I cut some things out because I only have three minutes. And also, has the hospital been involved in this, to know what they're supposed to do in case there is an emergency? You know, all these things have to come into play, and this way here, okay, I think my three minutes are up. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Mr. Lewis, I know you have some questions in there. We don't engage in conversation during the meeting, but we can certainly have somebody call you tomorrow and talk about your concerns. Okay? Yep, got it right on here. Thank you. Next, Dr. Thomas McCann? Yeah, I think I got that right.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm here this evening not as a future board member. I'm not running for the school board. Someone asked me that earlier this morning when I told them I was coming to the board meeting. You guys are doing a fine job, and I leave that up to you. But I'm here as, obviously, a past principal. I was in this building for 24 years, and it was a beautiful place to be and work. And I'm here as a grandparent. And the reason I'm here is because this past spring would trigger up, what I'm about to say is that I was at three middle schools in Violin working. I've done a lot of work in Atlantic City as a substitute administrator. I was in the middle schools here at Wallace, at Pillah, and at Memorial. And what I don't want my grandchildren to do is go through what they went through. My grandchildren will be sixth-generation violanders. They will, it'd be four generations of violanders going through Violin Public Schools. Their great-great-great-grandfather and great-grand-great-grandfathers did not go to school, but they worked as shoemakers on Landis Avenue. So we had four generations going through these beautiful schools of Violin, and obviously, Violin School District has done extremely well over the years. But our school district is so crowded in the middle schools. We're over 200 students beyond legal capacity in the three middle schools. 200 more, and way more than 200 more than Wallace, 200 Memorial, and 200 Pillah. That is a unbelievable situation as far as we're concerned. But the problem is that we went from four schools, four middle schools, to three. And when I found out, when I'm talking to people in the community, most people think Rossi School is a middle school. And I tell them, no, that's not a middle school. They go, well, then where is the middle schools? I say, Pillah, Wallace, and Memorial. And that confusion, that once we say we're dividing all those kids into three schools rather than four, and we're over 200 in each school, there's another school. Now, obviously, we just had a school built, so that's not the way to go, in my opinion. My suggestion would be to resolve, help resolve the issue, and certainly I'd like the board to consider this option if they see it fit, to go to a model away from the middle school model. The middle school model nationwide and locally is dead. The middle school model does not work. I was here, like I said, in the middle school level for 24 years here, and then five years at middle school level in Ghoul Town before I went to the high school as assistant principal. So based on research, going to the K through 8, what they call neighborhood schools, go back to the creation of neighborhood schools. Neighborhood schools work, and I have an abundance of research, many documents showing how the schools nationwide are going to K through 8.
Excuse me, Mr. McCann, Dr. McCann?
Yes, ma'am.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay.
So if you could just finish up?
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I want to read out some of the benefits to the K through 8 model for neighborhood schools. Violin is already a very diverse community in all areas. Each school will be culturally diverse, not only good for schools but good for the community. Students walking to schools with their siblings, the possibility of looping where the students get the same teacher one year after another. Students and teachers watch the success of students, togetherness, and progress together. What I will do is, I have 30 items, but since I'm limited in time, I will share these with the board if it's okay with you, Ms. Spinelli, and I'll send them to the board. And what I'll do is, I have something for each board member. I appreciate your time. Didn't mean to exceed it, but it's a very important topic for our community to consider going to the neighborhood schools for the City of Violin, K through 8. It's a model that Bridston School District has, and they have been very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCann. Angel Branch?
Hi, my name is Angel Branch. I have a student in the school going in the grade 4. Your first speaker is the one that informed me about this meeting tonight, and I'm talking about, I came here to talk about the gender ideology curriculum, because every time I turn around, there's some post on Facebook about, you gotta go protest this. And I'm like, well, what is this curriculum? What am I supposed to be protesting? And I keep being told to go to my district. Everybody wants me to be upset, be mad, say that you guys are going to teach five- and six-year-olds inappropriate things about sex. And I'm like, can I see this curriculum? So where can I find the information about this gender, what's the word, gender ideology curriculum?
We'll refer you. I'll take your information, and we'll have our curriculum department, Assistant Superintendent Nathan Frye, contact you to give you information where to locate.
Right. That's all I want is the information so I can make an unbiased decision about whether or not. And also, what I found out is that people are upset, but they don't know that there's the option to withdraw their children from religious, for religious convictions. And you guys need to make that well, because people are getting upset about something that, A, they don't know nothing about. Nobody can tell me anything about it. But they're not telling them, they're telling them to get upset, but they're not telling them that you can withdraw. So that's not fair to the school board. And I think that information for the parents is good so that they can make their own decisions on what they want their children to be involved in. So I could give my information to the man out front? Thank you.
That's all I have. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the agenda items? Come up to the podium, please. Give us your name. Thank you.
Hi, sorry I came in late. My name is Kathleen Morris. I am a social worker within the district. I would just like the board to consider the detriment that could possibly be done at Barcy School without a dedicated social worker. I've been told that the reason to eliminate the position is based on numbers. Numbers don't equal our children, and numbers don't equal problems. I think that there should be a dedicated social worker to Barcy. And my position currently is split between Sabater and Barcy. So we're not only looking at Barcy numbers, we're looking at Sabater numbers and the impact that I can have there as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to motions and resolutions, I will now hand it over to Mr. Yano for his recommendations and approvals. Oh, consent agenda. Seeing none? None.
Requesting discussion regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.2. 1.1 would be the approval of the following items, A, B, C, D, E, and F, as noted on the agenda, and 1.2 would be approval of hourly pay increase from $19 to $21 per hour for summer bus drivers retroactive to June 27th, 2022.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Sabrana?
Yes, except I'm staying under new hires, number 4, employee 4706.
Sorry, that employee number again?
4706.
Thank you.
It's the only one on the list.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion regarding procedures and operations, items 2.1 through 2.4. 2.1, approval of district travel. 2.2, approval of the second reading of the following policies as noted on our agenda. 2.3, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the State of New Jersey Foster Grandparent Volunteer Program at the Lava Preschool. 2.4, approval authorizing the Board Secretary to enter into an affiliation agreement with the following colleges and universities for the 22-23 school year at zero cost to the board.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no resolutions for buildings and grounds, so we'll go to Finance. Requesting discussion regarding finance items 4.1 through 4.9. 4.1, approval of budgetary transfers for general school based in Ekpa for May 2022. 4.2, approval of the Board Secretary and Treasury Reports for May. 4.3, approval of the establishment of petty cash and change funds for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, provided nonfiled with the Board Secretary, A and B, as noted on our agenda. 4.4, approval of a resolution authorizing the changes to the Newfield National Bank depositories as attached for student activity counts for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. 4.5, approval of a resolution authorizing the changes to the Truist Bank depositories as attached for student activity accounts for the same time period of July 1st through June 30th, 2023. 4.6, approval of the annual report of district contracts pursuant to NJSA 18A 18A 42.2. 4.7, approval of the final New Jersey SIG insurance premiums. 4.8, approval of the FY23 Perkins Secondary Consolidated Application. 4.9, approval of the funding of the following grant, which is nonfiled with the Board Secretary for the State of New Jersey Department of Children and Families, Family Friendly Center Grant for Sabater Elementary.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? Motion?
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Ms. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Staying on 4.7.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion regarding finance, 4.10 through 4.16. 4.10, acceptance of the NJYC grant as provided nonfiled with the Secretary of the Board, fiscal year 22-23 New Jersey Youth Corps, Department of Labor and Workforce Development. 4.11, approval of the professional development on August 22nd for the Administrative Academy with NJPSA, FEA, at a cost of $3,700. at a cost of $3,700. 4.12, approval of an agreement with Golden Gate in support of their 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. 4.13, approval of a temporary staffing agreement with AccuStaffing Services at a rate of $25.50 per hour. 4.14, approval of the home instruction agreement between the City of Violin Board of Education and Brookfield Schools in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent to provide home instruction for students hospitalized or enrolled in the SA Step Ahead program. 4.15, approval of the renewal of the following service agreements with InSpeare Medical Center for Impact Healthcare Services. 4.16, approval of the renewal of the following public agreement between the City of Violin Board of Education and InSpeare Medical Center for Healthcare Services in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent, InSpeare Public Donor Agreement as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion regarding finance 4.17 to 4.23. 4.17, 4.17, approval of an in-house equipment rental agreement for 42 water coolers in various locations throughout the district with Arctic Coolers. 4.18, approval of the renewal contract with Blackboard Inc. for the district's Outcall Service. 4.19, approval of the shared service renewal with the Cumberland County Improvement Authority for Solid Waste Collection for the fourth year retroactive for July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, and the fifth year for the time period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. 4.20, approval of the interpreter services from the Latino Spirit for the English and Spanish translation of the 202223 VPS broadcasts on dates specified between July 13th through December 7th in the amount of $17,500. 4.21, approval of the financial management software agreement with Systems 3000, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Approval of the tuition contract between Cape May County Technical School and the city board, City of Violin Board of Education for 2223 school year in amounts noted on our agenda. 4.23, approval of the consultant agreement between the City of Violin Board of Education and E-Rate Consultant in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent to provide communications and other services through the E-Rate program at a cost of $15,750.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes, on all abstain on 4.19.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion regarding finance items 4.24 through 4.29. 4.24, approval of the following year three contract renewal for Food Service Management Company, RFP 01105390 for the term of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, with the option to renew two one-year terms for a total of five years with Sodexo. 4.25, approval awarding the following contract for construction management services for the term of July 7th to July 6th, 2024, with the option to renew two one-year terms. Construction Management Services contract to Cumberland County Improvement Authority. 4.26, approval of a resolution rejecting all bids received for district-wide CCTV system replacement. 4.27, approval of a tuition contract between the Salem County Vocational School District and the City Violin, City of Violin Board of Education for the following amount for full-time for 14 students at $6,277 per pupil per year. 4.28, approval of the sales of the vehicle list, which is on file with the board secretary to be auctioned on gov.deals. And 4.29, approval of the 10, of 10 Violin preschool bus advertisements renewal with JMI Enterprises LLC for a 12-month term, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $900.
Questions or comments?
Just a point of clarification with 4.24. We had previously gotten this approved for the Sodexo. Uh, we added the verbiage guarantee return of $150,000.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes, on all. Yes, on all abstain on 4.25.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes, and I guess I'm sorry to see the 2003 Chevy Blazer go. Uh, we covered many, many miles across North and South Jersey and and other, uh, parts of the Northeast. And your only problem was on a hot day when it got warm and the exhaust fumes were everywhere. So good luck to the new owner.
My condolences. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion regarding finance 4.30 through 4.32. 4.30, approval of the 20212022 joint transportation agreement between Willimford Board of Education and the City of Violin Board of Education in amount of $13,793.40. 4.31, approval of an agreement with the City of Millville Board of Education for the assignment of the Cumberland County Regional Transportation Cooperative Agreement for the remaining 20222023 and 20232024 school years effective July 1st, 2022. And 4.32, approval of the following Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives as noted on the agenda for A, B, and C.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Regular agenda, none. Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members, none. Approval of the May 2022 bills. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Emergent items with prior approval, none. Old business. Anyone have any old business? New business. Anyone have any new business? Seeing none? Board member remarks, starting with Mr. Sabrana.
Thank you. Um, wishing everyone a safe and happy summer. And I know that, uh, our staff's gonna be very busy getting ready for the school year. And, um, I hope we have a successful start without too many problems. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Um, none at this time, thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Holmes?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Acosta?
Just again, I'll echo Mr. Sabrana's sentiments, uh, wishing everyone a very happy summer. I hope the, uh, summer program for those involved in our summer academies are going well. Um, and we'll look forward to seeing you sometime in August. Thank you.
Ms. Fabry?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Cottis Patti?
I would just like to echo what others said. Um, I want to thank those who did come out and speak, and I'm sure that the concerns that you all have will be addressed by the department that needs to have it addressed by. We are very concerned about school safety. We don't take that lightly, so I'm sure someone will be reaching out to you. Um, I'm sure there was just something with the agenda that we just didn't, we missed, but I'm sure everything will be addressed at some point. I'm hoping everybody is having a great summer and will continue. You still have a month to go. Thank you to all the staff that are coming in for the summer programs. Uh, we do appreciate you. Again, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Yano?
You almost forgot me. I saw you. Want to welcome our new food service director, Shannon Luciavo. Uh, worked with Sodexo. She has been a great addition to our team and has jumped right into the thick of things as she supports our summer academy. Uh, again, big shout out to all of our summer academy teachers, bus drivers, aides, administrators, parents, and students. We've had a great reception, a great kickoff to the program. We'll look to do, uh, and continue a wonderful effort this summer. I also want to thank all of our hard work and dedicated staff members for another successful school year. We had a wonderful school year. June was full of memorable events celebrating our students' accomplishments at every level of our program. And I want to wish a special congratulations to the Von High School graduates, the class of 2022. It was an honor and a pleasure to see our 538 seniors walking across the stage and into the next exciting chapter of their lives. We hope you continue to enjoy your summer and look forward to seeing you in September. Thank you.
Thank you. The Violin School Board election process is upon us. The City of Violin Board of Education has school board candidate applications available for residents of Violin who intend to seek a term with the school board for the November 8th, 2022 election. The petitions are available to be downloaded, or you can pick them up at the administrative office. For more information, you can call 856-794-6700, extension 2010. The school board has three seats open with a three-year term of each. The petitions are to be filed directly with the Cumberland County Clerk's Office by 4:00 PM on Monday, July 25th, 2022. That's all I have for this evening. At this time, I call this meeting adjourned.
So moved.
Second.